One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mia Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Seven present.
It is a pleasure and an honor for the mayor and members of the school committee and Dr. Scott's administration to welcome the students from the McCallum School. Welcome. This evening's spotlight on excellence presentation on Wednesday, December 17th, will feature McCallum School Stay Green. A school-wide approach for promoting a positive school culture. This collaborative endeavor is a school-wide project that focuses on having a clear and consistent approach for classroom management around behavior and developing a common understanding and set of beliefs around positive and proactive discipline approaches. The following is an outline of the presentation. One, Jason DeCarlo, principal of the McCallum School, presented a brief explanation of this undertaken and introduced the following teachers. Two, Patty Davidson and Suzanne Tingas, McCallum School teachers, will share the implementation of the initiative and the success of the program, followed by introducing McCallum School students to further explain the details. And three, the following students will provide a brief overview of the details of the program. Jeremiah Pino, Alexa Sheehan, Kevin Goodwin, Kelly Grace, Juan Luis Vega, and Lucy Morellos. So let's give these students again a round of applause for being here.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, if I can just add one more person, we had an addition, Lain Longton as well. If we could just give Lain a nice round of applause. Thank you. As principal of the McCallum School, I'm very proud to be standing before you to celebrate and recognize the hard work of staff and students at the McCallum School and sharing with you how the McCallum team stays green. When you think of staying green, you may think of recycling and conserving our natural resources. However, at the McCallum, staying green means that students are putting forth their best effort to be responsible and respectful members of our school community. It has proven to us that when students have clear and consistent protocol that focuses on recognizing the positive and when staff have a common understanding around cooperative discipline approaches, that the school culture and community is one that is productive for all. Tonight, I'm joined by Patty Davidson and Sue Tingas, who are two staff members who showed strong leadership in developing the idea of staying green. And I also have seven students from the McCallum School who are very excited to be here with us, and they're going to explain to you more about how the McCallum team stays green. So I'd like to introduce Patty Davidson.
Good evening. Through the UTL surveys that were taken last winter, discipline was the top concern among all staff, teachers, parrots, and specialists. In response to the surveys, the assistant principal at the time, Kim Olivera, Sue Tingas, and myself, visited a few schools in Boston. And we came across a K-8 school that implemented the CHAT system as well as the book Cooperative Discipline by Linda Albert. The first thing that struck us was the positive energy. The focus was on positive behavior, expectations that were clearly stated in every room with students and staff on board. Mr. DeCarlo has always focused on finding the positive in all children and situations. Therefore, we thought this program was a good fit for our school. Mr. DeCarlo then empowered us to form a committee. We had an overwhelming response with at least one classroom teacher representing each grade level wanting to pilot the program. Sue will continue.
The committee met bi-weekly to work on creating a clear and consistent approach for classroom management around student behavior and develop a common understanding and set up set beliefs around positive and proactive discipline approaches. As we strategically and slowly begun implementation, the students became very excited and many staff members were interested in learning more. Due to the success of the pilot program, the whole school adopted this system at the start of the following school year, which was this school year. At the orientation staff meeting, a copy of the book Cooperative Discipline was handed to all staff members, teachers, parrots, and specialists. Materials for the charts were handed out and teachers who had piloted the program demonstrated its use. During the next few staff meetings, our administrators allowed us the time to read, discuss, and ask questions about the book and how it was working in every individual's classroom. The CHAT is the tool that we use to manage the behaviors, while the book has become our philosophy.
Jeremiah.
Hi. At the McCallum School, we have behavior charts to monitor our behavior. Every student's name is on the chart and there are colored cards. The colors are green, yellow, purple, blue, and red. Green means you are doing awesome and making good choices. Yellow represents a warning. It is a reminder to get back on track. Purple means you still are not making good choices and you have to fill out a reflection sheet. Blue comes after purple, and this means you are still not making good choices and you need to make a call home. Red is the final color. If your card is turned to red, it means you need to meet with another teacher, assistant principal, or principal. Every day is a new day and we all start off green. The charts in our classrooms remind us to make good choices.
You will see, you will see chat, you will see community rules posted for each grade. At the McCallum School, there are community rules next to the card chart. The community rules remind us to stay green. Some examples of what we need to remember to do is remember to keep hands and feet to yourself, respect school property and people, always do your best. At the beginning of the school year, we all have to accept the rules and agree to follow them. If you choose not to, you will have to face the consequences. At the McCallum School, we all work as a team to follow the community rules. It's hard to be green, but that's why there is a rule that says encourage others to do their best.
You'll see a reflection area with reflection sheets. At the McCallum School, we have reflection sheets. When you turn your card purple, you get a reflection sheet. On the reflection sheet, you have to describe your bad choice and tell what you will do differently next time. When you are done with your reflection sheet, you have to show it to your teacher. At the end of the day, you have to take home the reflection sheet and get it signed by your parent or guardian. The next day, you have to bring it back to your teacher signed. If you choose not to bring it home, your teacher might mail it to your house or make a call to your parent or guardian to let them know about the choices you have made in school. Going purple is not a good idea.
You'll see signs in classroom windows like these. If you walk in the halls at my school, you will see a sign in classroom windows. The sign has a green face and it says, "Staying Green." On the other side is a yellow face that says, "Encourage Us." When people walk in by my class, I want them to see a "Staying Green" sign because that means my class is working together and making good choices. My teacher is proud of us when we show a green sign.
You will see calendars on every child's desk like these. At the McCallum School, each student has a monthly calendar. At the end of the day, all students color in the color that they ended the day with. Confused don't be. It is simple. If you ended the day with green, you get to tell, you get to color that day on your calendar green. If you ended the day on yellow, you color that day yellow. I told you it was simple. The calendars are a great way to help students, teachers, and parents to see and monitor their behavior each day and month.
You'll see lots of positive recognitions from faculty and students. At the McCallum School, everyone wants to be green. It is important that we encourage each other by recognizing when we stay green. When teachers use us, when teachers see us in the hallway, they remind us to stay green. Mr. DeCarlo and Mrs. Murphy encourage us to stay green during morning announcements. Every board in, I mean, every morning, they write a message on a whiteboard in the lobby that reminds us to stay green too. Different teachers write us notes to and tell us that we are doing a great job staying green. I encourage my classmates to do their best and stay green each day. Parents ask their children at the end of the day, "Did you stay green?" Our parents are proud when we have a green day. We get green stickers that say, "Congratulations, you stayed green." It is helpful when we all encourage each other to stay green.
You will see monthly celebrations for staying green. If your calendar is all green for the month, you get to go to a celebration for your hard work. In September, children who stayed all green got to see the police department's new bloodhound. It was exciting. We got to come up with names for the new puppy. In October, we had munchkins and apple cider. We played freeze dance to songs from High School Musical. Three students won. In November, we had cake with green frosting and juice, and we watched a movie. The movie was Charlie Brown's Thanksgiving. On Friday, there will be the celebration for all the students to stay green for December. We can't wait. It is not easy being green, but it is worth it.
You will see a school that focuses on empowering children to be responsible members of the McCallum School family. I have always been fortunate to work with wonderful and caring teachers, but there is something extra special about the people at the McCallum School. We invite you to come by for a visit and spend some time with our students and teachers to see for yourself how when children are encouraged to make good personal choices, we are able to build positive and productive learning environments.
Closing statement, Mr. Principal?
Okay, yes, closing statement. It's proven to be very effective, and again, we really want to empower the children, and they have a very clear and consistent understanding of what the expectations are. And we feel that focusing on the positive has really proven to be beneficial because the children really want to stay green and they really want that recognition. So it's something that we've discovered, it's working, and thank you for letting us share it.
Mr. DeCarlo, I just want to say on behalf of the school committee, thank you for this lovely gift, and every one of the students at McCallum School are outstanding students. And you certainly represented the school with immense pride this evening, and every one of you went to that podium, and you knew exactly what you were going to say and how you said it, and you presented yourself very, very well, and we're all proud of you, very, very proud of you. Now, everyone put their hands together for you. Would you put your hands together for your teachers at the McCallum School? Would you give them a round of applause? Thank you very much, and you're welcome anytime, anytime. Thank you so much. Moving on with the agenda, if I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting by Ms. Fattacante.
Motion to accept the minutes, Your Honor.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been accepted and placed on file. There are no requests for permission to enter. We will move to memorials. By Regina M. Fattacanti. Memorials with Dockin Chambers and a moment of silence for Lucy J. Conlon, sister of Susan Smith, student support district specialist. Arlene Laurent, mother of Diane Chandonay, Special Education Evaluation Team Chairperson, and Janine Davis, professional at the Laura Lee School. Russell A. Sibley, grandfather of April Watts, Title I teacher at the Lincoln School. Valerie J. Soral, sister-in-law of Patricia Ryan, Lincoln School, professional, and Kathy Keen, coordinator of the Cardinal O'Connell. And Willie C. Hendricks, brother of Herb Hendricks, Beale School custodian. Let us all rise with a moment of silence and Dockin Chambers. Thank you, may they rest in peace. Is there any unfinished business to discuss at this point in time? If not, is there any public participation? If not, we will move on with the agenda. I can read my motion from here if no one has any objections.
Certainly, Your Honor.
The motion by Mayor Edward Caulfield requests that the superintendent of schools work with the appropriate school and city officials to ensure that a system of safeguards are in place to protect monies deposited in the PTO accounts seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Doherty, I will not belabor this issue. I have the utmost respect for PTOs, not only in Lowell but throughout the country. They work hard, bake sales, cow washes, they raise money to benefit the school and the students. All I want to do is make sure that there's a safeguard in place so those parents who are working hard to raise that money know that there's an accounting plan or accounting effort coming forward to address these issues. With that said, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Second motion by Regina M. Fattacanti requests that the superintendent provide a report on the status of the magnet school program at the Bartlett School, seconded by Mr. John Lay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Simply, we had had lots of discussion. I remember Ms. Martin was the head of the committee, that spearheaded the discussion between the university and us regarding the maintaining the magnet school program. It seems to have disappeared, Your Honor, and I'm not quite sure whose responsibility that is, whether that is the responsibility of the principal for not making it very clear to the University of Lowell that the program be maintained, or is it our responsibility that we didn't make it clear enough to the University of Lowell that the program be maintained? Regardless, it is ceased to function. Now, that's a problem because we had a very clear, we gave very clear directions to the university, that this and to the school administration, that this program was, that the magnet school program was to continue, and it has not. So I'm seeking a report to discover what has exactly happened, and then after we get the report, Your Honor, we'll take steps from there. Thank you.
Mr. Louis?
I think it's an excellent motion. In fact, Mr. Leahy and I almost put a joint motion in together when we read the funding was going to be cut. I think it's a timely one. I think there's been some answers to that that I've received from the administration, they're good answers, but there is a need of a report as to what actions that we need to take place going forward. So I definitely want to support the motion, it's a good one. Thank you.
So, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I think it's an excellent motion also, and I agree that I think over the last few years we've lost touch with the structure and what our goals were at that school. And I think what needs to happen also too is I think we need to take a good look at the partnership with the university. And we've had discussions on this, and some of us agree on it, some of us don't, but I think what we need to come to agree on, if it's going to be a program built with the university, it's got to be somewhat untouchable by some of our union rules and regulations. We need to keep those teachers in that school if they're going to participate in that program. And unfortunately, sometimes when we have cuts or layoffs or whatever, and we have to bump people out of that school, I think that's something that we need to address because if we're going to work with the university closely on this and have student teachers and then they become part of the school system, and then next thing we know, they're out at another school. So we need to maintain the consistency for the students in the program. So this is a very good motion, and I look forward to discussing it.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and Madam Superintendent, you'll be bringing in a report or something forward to this committee. Thank you. Moving on with the motions. By Jackie Doherty. Request that the superintendent prepare two budget proposals, one for a level-funded budget and one with a 10% reduction in state funding, seconded by Mr. Conway. On the motion, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion speaks for itself pretty much. State Senator Steve Pangiotakis gave a presentation to education leaders last week, which I believe we all have a copy of tonight, where he said the best case scenario is a level-funded budget for the schools, and we could go up to 10% cut in state funding. I know that's not news to my colleagues, and I'm sure that my colleagues also share my concern with, we've been making cuts for years. In fact, many of my colleagues were here back in 2002 when those initial really deep cuts started, and I'm concerned about where we're going to find 10%, what that's going to mean to the quality of education our children receive. Just for an example, if we're looking at $10 million, last year, we closed the Varnum Elementary School to save $1 million. And as my colleague to my left mentioned, there was a disruption in staffing because of that, because of the, we had to lay off people and senior staff bumped newer staff. Many of them were at the Bartlett Community School in particular. So I think we need to get as much information as soon as we can so we can start to think outside the box in terms of how we're going to meet the fiscal restraints that are facing us. And that was my intention with this motion, is to get some of that information out there so we could start talking about it. Thank you.
On the motion, Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I agree with Ms. Doherty that we certainly have to prepare for the inevitable, and that is financial problems that we're being faced with, with the state, on the state level and also on the city level. However, I think we have to be very cautious too, because as Senator Pangiotakis said, we won't really know those bottom-line figures until perhaps somewhere around April or May.
That's right.
And what I would be concerned with is coming up with a proposal, even though I realize that I'm sure the superintendent and her staff are working on some type of proposal in case there is level funding or 3% or 4% or whatever it may be. But I think to make that public, should we say, at this particular point, might be a problem because, first of all, we don't know what the bottom line is. And I think what we would be doing is we have a number of teachers and administrators and parrots and secretaries and so forth, and all of a sudden, that would start to alarm them. Needless to say, it would certainly create a morale problem at this particular point. And I think until we get some firm figures, we have to be cautious on taking a proposal and giving it to the, should we say, the public at this particular point, because I'm not sure if we really know, again, what the numbers are going to be. So I would, I'd hate to kind of put us in a situation where, for example, going back into when we had Proposition Two and a Half, where we had people laid off. And I know for myself, I was one of those individuals. It's not an easy time, and we're going through some very, very difficult times, and I'd hate to put that type of pressure on someone needlessly, at this particular point. So I think we have to be cautious with that and how we take that information and how we give it to the public.
Ms. Martin, and then Mr. Louis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think, having heard the comments from both my colleagues, I think that we can, I think we'd be best served to find a middle ground. I think the reality is, is that this budget season is going to be made up of large overarching actions and will also be made up of small, person-by-person, position-by-position type of actions. I think that it would be helpful for this committee, certainly for the administration, to take time now to think about those larger overarching solutions. I think I'm being very euphemistic in using that term, but some of the larger, big-picture changes that you're anticipating that can have profound impacts in terms of policy, in terms of the structure of our district, and some of those things I think do warrant conversation before we get into the nitty-gritty of a budget discussion. So I think that perhaps, and I would defer to my colleagues if this offers a certain resolution, if we were looking at this initial report to be basically those big-picture considerations that are being discussed by the cabinet, that are being considered throughout the administration and working with teachers and staff, so that we can have some ideas of where we're moving towards. I agree, we don't want to be talking about reducing any, you know, any staff category by three, because then you just send an entire staffing category into a very bad place that isn't warranted. And I don't think that that's, it's certainly not thoughtful, it's not well-considered, and I think we'd be better served to focus on big-picture issues right now, receive that report, and then it makes us better equipped as we move into that nitty-gritty portion of our line-by-line budget discussion, if that's amenable to the maker of the motion and to Mr. Conway as well.
Mr. Louis?
You picked her first, so she took the words right out of my mouth. I think essentially, there is a need to start making moves in certain areas that, in terms of the word reorganization, and a lot of that needs to take place really in the first quarter of 2009. So those issues, I think, should be brought forward to the appropriate committees, be it the finance, personnel, et cetera. I think that action needs to be brought forward. Ms. Martin said it a lot more eloquently than I can say it. In regards to 10%, 1%, we really, as Mr. Conway said, we really don't know. We do know that it's going to be a difficult year, so we need to start planning. I know that Ms. Doherty, the maker of the motions on the Finance Committee Subcommittee, we're going to have a lot of meetings next year, we're going to begin in January, looking at that. That might be one form of many others that would be appropriate. I'm thinking of personnel, et cetera. So if that can be changed, the verbiage that Ms. Martin articulated, that would be great. In addition, there's also a motion a month ago by me and Mr. Leahy regarding something very similar, without specific numbers in it. The motion's not a bad motion, we have to face the reality that we are going to have significant less money, I guess. Thank you.
If I may, I think it's an excellent motion. City manager Lynch has instructed every department head to formulate a budget with a 5% to a 10% reduction. Speaker of the House Sal D'Amisi has indicated that you can expect a 5% to 10% cut in local aid. I'm looking at an 8% cut, which would be $12 million to the city. 50% of our budget, 50% of the city's budget is local aid. So if there was a 10% cut to our local aid, it'd be $15 million. You have to face reality. The warning signs have been out there for six months, the red flag has been raised, and I think it's wise for this administration to formulate a plan. Where would those cuts be? Where would, how would it affect the education of the children and so forth? You have to start doing that. You can't wait until May or June to raise the red flag, because it's already been raised for us. And we all know, the little delegation, Senator Pangiotakis, has brought forward some warnings six months ago. Tighten your belt, tighten your belt. Tighten your belt, tighten your belt. And that's what we have to do. And if you read the Low Sun today, the predictions could be worse in May or June. So, I think it's an excellent motion, and I think that the superintendent should look into the budget with a 5% or a 10% cut in that budget. And I'll let you know another thing. The mayor of Methuen has done this four months ago. Four months ago. So, it's a wise, it's a wise thing to do, and don't wait until I told you so. And that's, we have to face reality. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to make one final comment. I think it's difficult for people in the public, and even for myself, as somebody, you know, on the front lines of this, to imagine what is 5 million less or 10 million less going to mean. So, when we start to look at ways, like my colleague said, the big picture, you know, ways to reduce our expenses by 5 million dollars or 10 million dollars or 10% or whatever numbers you're throwing out there, it's a reality piece that people need to see, what does that look like? What does 5 million dollars less look like in terms of the education of our children? Or, worst-case scenario, 10% or 10 million dollars or more than that. And I think that really is my impetus with this. I understand the concern about getting down to a specific line item, that, you know, that is going to be concerning for people. But I think to start, we need to really get a handle on where we're going to cut, what that impact is. And that really is my intention.
And this city's not the only city with this problem. Throughout the state of Massachusetts, it's from Maine to California, we are in a desperate and serious recession, and it's serious, really, really serious. So, Mr. Conway?
Just very quickly, I don't think there's anybody here that disagrees with the fact that suggestions are going to have to be made, and plans are going to have to be made. I think the problem that I have is the timeframe and the release of the information. I would like to hear from the superintendent if she has a, if she's been working on a proposal with this particular point of potential cuts, taking into consideration the, if we do have a shortfall of X amount of dollars or X amount of percentage, and see what her strategy is, first of all.
Madam Superintendent?
Sorry, my mic's not on. I think it's a great motion, but I, you know, just for people at home, through conversations with the superintendent, she has been working on this.
Thank you.
And this isn't, this is just a formal motion on the floor, but we've all had discussions with the superintendent over the last few weeks or months, and so I just want to make sure that people at home, that we are...
Well, this is the first time formally a motion's come forward.
Right, it's formally on the floor now, but, okay, first, a second. But the point I just want to make is, I'm sure that the staff and the superintendent have been working on this. We've all thrown our pitches to her, and she's let us know that she is working on it, so...
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, in fact, I have had many conversations with each of you, most recently in this form through the superintendent's goals. And the superintendent's goals, three of those four goals, in many respects, goes to Ms. Martin's point of looking at the big picture. What is the response that we've heard from teachers, from administrators, and the restructuring of various departments? How do we presently deliver curriculum? How do we presently deliver various services in the fields of technology, through the parent information, transportation, food services, et cetera? So, all of these, you know, the examination of these various departments and looking at our achievement scores, and what departments can we bring together? How can we streamline things? And what additional services perhaps do we need? At the same time, we're going to have to eliminate something else to address the deficits that we see throughout the system in various areas. So, we are presently and have been all fall, knowing full well. Originally, I had thought, just, you know, having been a superintendent in the state now for over five years, I knew that this picture for FY-10 was going to be brutal. I did think it was between 4 and 5 million dollars, best-case scenario. As recently as this week, we're thinking it's 10. You just can't make those type of cuts, you know, in all due respect, three weeks before. You really do have to, because we have already been cut to the bone. So, we do have to be very thoughtful, that takes time. So, we have begun and continue to look at what needs to be addressed so that the cuts, and these are significant cuts for us, will be, you know, offer, I can offer you the best information so that you have to make, I know, very, very difficult choices coming up. So, when the committee wants us to present either scenario or whatever scenario, we will present it, but the scenarios unfortunately will mean real people's jobs.
Ms. Leary?
Just to follow up, too, I don't know how, it seemed like I'm almost on the wrong side of this issue, and it wasn't anyone's intent, that the focus has always been, and I think every member in this committee has said, that we are having significant cuts. I know if I said it before, last year, it was like 3 million, now it's up to 4 and 5 million. The reality is, we've already begun to work on it. Changes are already going to be made. Parent information centers, probably the first change, we'll look at at the beginning of next year. There'll be other reorganizations that are going to have significant change within the low public schools, and significant savings, or not savings really, it's going to be a cut, cut into muscle, that we're going to do, and we need to do it in a thoughtful and appropriate manner. And how it's rolled out is just as important as the cut that's going to be made. And I talked to my state rep who lives in my neighborhood, Kevin Murphy, in my neighborhood, I see him, you know, weekly, I get information from him all the time. The senator lives, Senator Pangiotakis, lives in my neighborhood, see him at the store, he keeps warning me to prepare for it. And I think every other member here has talked to their reps and the senator as well. So, everybody's fully cognizant that this is going to be really tough. So, I mean, I don't, I can vote for the motion, I mean, I think the problem is, we already have a motion that's similar to it regarding having some cuts perhaps in January or February for me and Mr. Leahy about a month ago. I don't have a problem with voting for it with the intent of, we are going to have some difficulty. But to suggest that the members of this committee are cognizant of that is simply a poor statement. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by say nine. Any opposed? The motion carries. The next motion by Jackie Dougherty requests the superintendent update the curriculum subcommittee regarding scheduling and implementation of math interventions in the middle schools, including any data demonstrating effectiveness, seconded by Mr. Leahy. On the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. My intent with this motion, again, is to look very carefully at programs we have in place in order to determine their effectiveness. The interventions at the middle school is, particularly around math, have been very successful. I think that they're difficult as well, because we have, we're still trying to have kids in mixed math classrooms and ability-grouped classrooms, so they tend to be a little bit expensive and difficult to schedule. So, part of my concern with this motion is to really look at how the middle schools are implementing those interventions, and if we have consistency across the district. I'm concerned that perhaps we don't, but I really look forward to seeing the report and looking at it in more detail. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by say nine. Any opposed? The motion carries. The last motion of the evening by Connie Martin requesting that the superintendent update the committee on the most recent dropout data released from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and include information on efforts both statewide and locally targeted at dropout reduction and student retention, seconded by Ms. Fattacante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Traditionally, we tend to receive information at this point in the year regarding our dropout status. Just a request really to get this information, I think it's obviously a number that is a critical indicator as to the success of our district. And I would also add that I would like us to be able to receive the appropriate context so that we're able to look at a couple of years, make some comparisons. I'm particularly interested in some of the statewide efforts that are going on in terms of dropout reduction. And then obviously, I know we have a great number of local efforts, both, you know, at the behest of the school department itself, also with some work we're doing with a number of different nonprofits. So, I'd like to have a chance for the committee to be briefed on really that, a comprehensive picture of what is going into this effort to try and keep our students on track, keep them in school, and increase the overall success rate that we see at our high school. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Any subcommittee reports? Can't believe it. Home education.
Yes.
Madam Superintendent?
Nelson and Philzbinat Gomes at 930 Gorham Street, wish to homeschool their child. Under General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 1, home education is constitutionally permissible. Therefore, I recommend approval of this request. If granted, the number of families approved by the Low School Committee to homeschool will total 32, and the total number of children will be 55.
Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Mr. Dougherty? Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
No new business? No new business?
Well, just the conventions and...
Yes. Convention and conference request?
Yes. The additional information that the school committee had requested with regards to the trip to Quebec that the high schools, those students want to take. Mr. Samaras has provided the committee with the additional information about this particular trip to Quebec, and I gather the International Language Club has taken this trip for the past 20 years. And the details of this particular trip are in front of you to see if...
Yes.
...there's any additional information after this particular memo that the committee wanted or needed before they decided.
Okay. Ms. Fattacante, and then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I understand what the memo says. They have made arrangements, and here's my response. It's not the cost. The law sentence says there's no cost to the school department. It's not the cost, Your Honor. It is the fact that this trip could be taken during the Christmas break or the February break. This teacher purposely scheduled the trip to be during the winter carnival. That was the choice she made. And then she tries to say that, well, these, all these other activities are going to take place that are so incredibly noteworthy. Well, Your Honor, those activities could take place during the February break or the Christmas holiday break and not miss out on a thing, except for the winter carnival. So, my question is, are you going for the winter carnival, or are you going for the tobogganing and the dance lessons from the French-Canadian teenagers, or the history tour that you receive while touring the city? My feeling is that going for the winter carnival. And that's okay. I'm still going to vote no. Now, if my colleagues want to allow this trip, go right ahead. But this teacher, Your Honor, should be put on strict notice that this should never happen again. This should not happen again. She should not plan a trip which involves taking a day off during the school week. Thank you.
Ms. Martin, and then Ms. Dougherty.
And if I'm not mistaken, we're talking two days off, right? Is that correct? So, a Friday and a Sunday are both being taken off for this trip?
Friday afternoon till Monday.
How many days? Two days?
Well, I believe...
Friday?
I believe it's after two and then Monday.
Okay, so it's the one, they're missing the one school day. You know, I have to, again, agree with my colleague. I think that while there's a great deal of information in this memo, it is reiterating what we already knew. I am curious as to this listing here of the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks for Foreign Language, Standard 4, strands 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. While I appreciate that our teachers are very well-versed in the Massachusetts frameworks, I must confess that I cannot name them by strand or number or letter. It would be helpful if someone could let me know exactly what those strands are.
Sure.
I mean, if we're voting tonight, I'd need to know tonight, so if it's not included in the memo, I'd need to have that information. It's obviously critically important in terms of our language skills-building. I also think that, you know, we've had this conversation, I know that at the first of the year, we have in place plans for the, I believe, the high school subcommittee and a group of individuals to come up with a rock-solid policy so that we can avoid this in the future. You know, I can say for one that I will be very strongly supporting, that no school time be sacrificed for the sake of these types of trips. I think it's unfortunate, as I said before, that this is a, the situation that these children, at the end of the day, children, have found themselves in, and I think that's truly unfortunate. And again, there is nothing in this memo that gives me any additional information that inspires me to think that my previous decision of not being willing to support a day out of school for this trip has changed. So, I will be maintaining my same opinion of this. While I appreciate this teacher's desire and I'm sure, you know, sincerity in wanting to put in place an educational experience for students, it's difficult when that information hasn't been communicated effectively to teaching staff and that, for whatever reason, she was not aware of this committee's concerns regarding school attendance, that, again, for whatever reason, that that fact, which has been very clearly articulated, I believe, on this floor, has somehow not managed to be communicated effectively. And if that is the failing of this committee, I think it is incumbent upon us to say loudly, clearly, strongly, and often that we want our students to go to school, and we want them in their classrooms, learning. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I supported the motion at the last meeting that this trip should not happen because it took away from school time. But there are two pieces of information in the memo tonight that have changed my opinion, at least for this particular trip. One is that the students and families have already paid money that they will not be able to get back. I know we went through the process of getting a passport for my son last year. It's expensive, it's time-consuming, and the deposit is non-refundable. The other piece of information, I just wouldn't want those families, those children, to lose that money and that opportunity. The other piece of information is that there's a 20-year history here. There's a past practice, and I agree with my colleagues that we have been very clear on this committee that we want students in school, but for this particular trip, I just, I cannot find it in myself to vote no again on this. My message would be, okay, you go this time, but don't come back with this sort of thing again, because we are going to have a very clear policy, and we're going to follow it in the future. But the fact that they had for 20 years taken the trip, when they planned it in October, and they took the deposits from those students, and the families then went and got the passports, that carries some weight with me. I don't want those families to lose that money and the kids to be disappointed, and it seems like it would be the students who would suffer, when it really is an administrative issue, I think, in terms of making sure that our school trips comply with the policy of this committee, which is we want our students in school, so...
Mr. Conway?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Ms. Dougherty. The fact is, it is something that has taken place for a number of years, and I think we're at a situation right now where I certainly would not want to see the students or the parents lose the money that has already been put up front for this. But I think also, what some of my colleagues have expressed tonight, that this is it. We can't, we can't allow this to take place again because of, again, we're talking about having students go to school. We have put tremendous efforts into it to be there each and every day, and I don't think that this is, would be setting a great example. Even though, again, I'm sure that there's a lot of positive things have taken place in this trip, but I certainly would not want to stop this trip. I think that I would certainly vote to allow it, but I think that the teachers certainly should be cautioned, the administration, that this, I don't think, should take place again. Thank you.
Mr. Leary, Mr. Leahy? No response? Okay.
I guess we questioned the Ms. Martin raised regarding Strand 4. I mean, I confess ignorance on that issue. Does anybody have an answer for that tonight?
I don't have these strands actually memorized either, but I think, just two things. One, the strands aren't ranked in a hierarchy. We do know that, so these strands are... I don't have these strands actually memorized either. But I think, just two things. One, the strands aren't ranked in a hierarchy. We do know that. So these strands are relevant. So regardless of what the strands say, which we can definitely get you that information, one strand, according to the Department of Ed, isn't necessarily ranked as any more important than the other. But I would appreciate if the committee could, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but to take, to turn this into policy this evening by taking a vote. I don't know if it works that way, if you can do that. Because I think it is important, as we discussed at a previous meeting, that we are sending the same message to our staff as we do our families when we say to our families, you know, that we want your children in school. We don't want you to miss school, take your children on trips, et cetera. So just so that we're all saying the same thing. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
You know, I'd just like to say, I certainly understand the desire not to see students and families inconvenienced, have them lose money. That's not my intention. It's, you know, the fact that this has a long history really speaks to the fact that, having been here for a number of years now, certainly not 20, the 20-year history of this trip, but for, you know, nine or 10, had this conversation multiple times. I mean, I couldn't even count how many times we've had this conversation on this floor regarding the trips and the school days. And I think that, I think it's, the idea that, you know, we, this time, we really mean it? Great. I mean, we've said that every time.
Said it before.
It's been ignored. And if this committee is comfortable being ignored and saying, no, really, now we mean it? Okay. Now, really, we mean it. If we, if this committee is prepared to take action on a policy, then it's a policy that needs to be enacted tonight. So either, you know, whatever that policy is, needs to, you know, I hope we all can agree that whatever we decide is going to apply to this trip and to every trip, just in terms of consistency. But I think that, as consistent as our message has been over the years that I've been aware of as a member of this committee, the reaction to it has been equally consistent. And without, without exception, really, we've had the same conversation over and over again. So, you know, then it's up to this committee to decide how we proceed.
Mr. Leahy, then I'll get you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I agree with both sides of the argument. You know, it's, when we say enough is enough, it's like, it reminds me of arguing with my kids. I mean, you just have to take it away once in a while. If there wasn't money involved, I would say absolutely that's it tonight and vote no. The money part bothers me, so tonight I'm going to vote yes for the trip. But after tonight, we have to set a strict policy and say, school is, you know, kids have to be in school and that's it. If you have these outings, you have to plan them around vacation time, summertime, whatever. I, you know, if there wasn't the money involved, I would absolutely not vote for this. My biggest issue also is that we never have enough information. So we've got all the information tonight, but it's always a case of getting it too late and, you know, when it, when they decide to send it over. So I'll vote in favor of it tonight. But I think the committee, we can either do it tonight or do it in a subcommittee. But, I mean, this is it. You know, from here on, from tonight on, through you, Madam Superintendent, you have to send a clear message that, you know, you have to be in school. Thank you.
You have a response to, Mr. Leahy?
I do. Absolutely that, for example, if something like this comes to my desk, given the permission of the committee, I just deny it at that level and it doesn't come to you. I know that's change of past practice, but if that's what you want, it's no problem.
Ms. Fattacante, then, Ms. Doherty.
And strictly an insurance matter. So this group has two choices. They can continue to take the trip and not have it be sanctioned by the Lowell School Committee. That being said, Your Honor, what that means is it is not an approved school trip and our insurance does not extend the coverage of those youngsters and those adults while they're in Canada. They can take the trip, but it will not be approved and sanctioned by the Lowell School Committee. Number two, regarding policy, I think the policy discussion is a very complicated issue. There are groups, for instance, DECA. They usually make it into the finals, which is an international competition. They have gone to Georgia. And we have sent this, we have sent that group to Georgia with our blessing and our congratulations, but it was an educational forum. And I'm not talking Georgia, you know, Peachtree, Georgia. I'm talking the other side of the world, Georgia. I consider that incredibly wonderful educational opportunity. The winter carnival just doesn't rise to the level as the same educational opportunity to me. The ROTC, those men and women in the ROTC make it a point every year, they will take dozens of students to college trips every year, Your Honor, to help those young people get into college. Should that, should that be a school committee sanctioned effort? Absolutely. So when we say about setting policy here tonight, I'm not prepared to do that because I think there are some nuances here that we really need to look at. What do we consider an educational benefit to youngsters? And sometimes it's not just going to the library or taking a class, but sometimes it's going to a college or it's representing the high school in Georgia at the DECA Decathlon. Those are, those are big deals. So this, this group has the choice to take this trip and not have it be sanctioned by the school committee. I understand there's a lot of money involved. But I concur with Ms. Martin. We made it very clear last year that we did not, we make it clear all the time that we do not want this to continue to happen. And I feel as though people could care less about what policies the school committee passes. And I understand, Mr. Leahy, and the bad child, and you continue to ask, and you continue to ask, you continue to ask. But if we don't put our foot down, people will continue to put things like this on the agenda and expect us to just vote for them. And so I can't vote for this.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you.
Thank you. And what Ms. Fattacante said is 100% correct. I think this has come back to us several times, I believe. This is the third time. The issue, however, is we don't have a specific policy saying not to do this. As, as, to pick the right adjective, as annoying as this is, as, to some, you know, somewhat disrespectful that we're getting this again in the way we're getting it, like, we do this over for 20 years. Because you do something that makes no sense and finally someone says enough is enough and I'm voting no, it doesn't mean we should keep doing it because you did it before. However, I'm going to have to support it because we simply don't have a specific policy in place saying not to do it. The money issue, they should have, this is another thing that kind of gets me really angry, is they should have gotten approved first before they started collecting money from folks. I mean, that would've been pretty nice. What if it was rejected? What if it's rejected tonight and they're going to blame the school committee? When in reality, they should have blamed the organizer for collecting the funds first. The passport stuff, passports are good for, what? Eight years or so? So you may use it again in life. So that's not a big deal. I am going to support it for the only reason that we haven't put a specific policy in place. Ms. Fattacante is correct. We need to be thoughtful with it. We can't make it tonight because there are educational situations that she clearly stated that we should be approving. So unfortunately, I'm going to vote yes. I'm not happy about it. What they presented here is something we should have an offline discussion during that subcommittee. They shouldn't be collecting money before something's approved under any circumstance. You shouldn't have to have a policy that says you wait to get approval before you get the money for it. And that's just common sense. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty, then, I'd like to have a few words.
Thank you. I just want to add one piece to it. I think that as we go forward, a comment that was made by my colleague about not getting enough information, I think that as we go forward and set the policy, we can be more specific about what that means. I mean, obviously, Mr. Leary's point that you get the permission before you collect the money, that seems like it would be clear that that's something that should happen. And in terms of the superintendent's role in all this, perhaps you can be the gatekeeper, making sure that before it comes before us, we have all the information or more information than we've been getting. My recollection of this trip was, I was not aware last year, I voted for this trip. In fact, I put the deposit and my son went on it. And I was shocked when I found out that it was not February vacation, that he was missing a day of school after we had already made the deposit, after, because I assumed...
This happened last year, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
He missed a day of school last year?
He missed a day of school last year, right. But what my point with that is, in the last 20 years that they've been taking this trip, it has come before the committee, it has been approved or they wouldn't have been able to go. So I think it speaks to the comment made earlier about not having enough information, that we should have very clear information about what time do they leave on Friday, if they're missing school, what activities, how is it, you know, educational? All those things have to be given to us. And I think we can, you know, firm up that language when we do set this policy. But I think that the fact that we have approved it in the past, and I think because we didn't have all the information or it wasn't clear to us. I was not, I was surprised when I found out that it was in February vacation and that my son missed a day of school last year for this trip. But again, as I said earlier, for tonight's purposes, I will support it because I don't want those students to lose that money. Thank you.
If, if, I may, the committee allows, I'd like to say a few things briefly on this issue. This is the last meeting we will have in the year 2008. When we convene the next meeting, it will be in January 2009. And next year is going to be crunch time. No matter how you want to get around it, we have some serious issues, fiscal issues. Madam Superintendent, as the mayor, I'm requesting you to send a strong message to your department heads throughout the entire public school system that trips that are going to be costly, trips that are going to come out of the school department budget will be scrutinized. And a trip like this, it's, and I agree with Ms. Fattacante and Ms. Martin, that I think the teacher didn't acknowledge, is the committee going to support this? Before she went out and planned this trip. And I think that's a slap in the face to this committee. It really is. But I'm stressing, next year, costly trips are not going to be, I'm not going to support them. Can't support them. The education of the child in the classroom is far more important. And that's what we have to really direct our funding to. Now, it says here that this teacher chaperoned a trip to Spain last year. Oh, no, 2007. Yeah, last year, 2007. There had to be school days missing there. You don't go to Spain on a weekend. So this school committee has, over the past 20 years, sanctioned these trips, which led this teacher to believe, hey, it's carte blanche. And there's $8,000 that some parents or some child is not going to get back. Plus the fact, it states here that Mr. Jarvis, there'll be no cost to the school department for substitute teachers. If there was, I wouldn't support this. And it'd be very easy for me to stand here and say no because I know there's four votes to support this. It'd be very easy for me to say no. But I'm going to say yes. But don't let it be a gesture, Madam Superintendent, that I'm happy doing it. Because this teacher and other teachers have to realize these trips are going to stop. You just, we just cannot fiscally or financially support it. And I want to stress, the education of the child is of the utmost importance to the teacher in the classroom. And I think we had a discussion with the athletic director traveling to San Diego, and I think that person is going to address that himself. So it's crunch time. And I don't want to, I just can't stress that enough. We're looking at millions of dollars of cuts. And we just have to pay attention. Something like this, the teacher was out of line here. Out of line. But the school committee, in the past, go ahead. Want to go to Spain? Go ahead. We endorse it. Well, that's exactly what happened here. And I think, Madam Superintendent, you have to be stern and let the entire school department know, you know what? It's over. All this, all this is over. We have to concentrate on the finances of this department. Yes, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree. Just a quick point, you know, the Spain trip did happen over a vacation week. It didn't sacrifice school time. It was a school vacation. I believe it was April, as I'm recalling, but it was last year.
They went five days and came back?
Yeah. It was over the course of nine days, a five-day... My understand, my remembrance of it was, it was specifically scheduled that way so that there was no school time laws. And I also think, you know, I appreciate that we can do this without, you know, substitutes, you know, that the, 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 the high school is going to be able to come up with a plan that will allow us to do this without having to hire substitutes, these three substitutes. That's great. Reality is, next year, those three positions, Reality is, next year, those three positions, they're dropping the bucket. We'll be doing, we'll be doing our education with, you know, less bodies. So, you know, I just think that, you know, again, to your point that we've approved in the past, I think, I think this may be one of those, Ms. Fattakany quotes, you know, "Shame on us," that we had these conversations and still left it to the discretion of the, these individuals, and they took advantage of that, and that's unfortunate. But again, now we need to fix that problem. So, I guess we'll look forward to having some conversations about a very stringent policy that will now not leave any room for flexibility, because unfortunately, we've been placed in a position where we have to take that, we have to take those opportunities away from staff.
Could I, I would like to tie something to my vote on this particular issue. And, Madam Superintendent, could you send some sort of memo to various departments in the Lowell Public Schools indicating that trips such as this will be scrutinized, and we have some serious cuts facing us, and they're going to have to realize that the finances will not be there? And I'm going to tell you, January, when I stand at this podium, anything comes before me to spend money that's not warranted or not directly associated with education, I will not support it. So, could you do that, Madam Superintendent, and make sure we get a copy of that memo?
Yes, Your Honor. Just a point of clarification. If we send out a memo that simply states, again, just to Ms. Fattakany's point about, if it's an educational trip that ties in with our programs, that takes the children out of the city, and they're doing fundraising, or that it's not coming out of our general operating budget, do we want to, again, stop those?
No, I'm not, I'm not...
Okay.
If it deals with education, then we have to support that.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
What I'm talking about is a person going to a conference in Las Vegas, some other parts of the country, and we just can't afford that. And that's, I think we have to address that on an individual basis.
Okay, so just another point of clarification. So, are we freezing, then, the professional development conference line items within our budget to send people out?
I don't think we want to get into this right now. Why don't we, why don't we take a roll call?
I think that's what a policy discussion is going to entail.
Okay, I just want to know what type of memo I'm sending out, and when I'm sending it.
Let's take a roll call, vote on this.
I don't even have a motion for first or second yet.
Motion to accept by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Conway.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakany?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Coffey?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five yays, two nays, passes.
Anything on the communications? Mr. Conway?
I think we have, I think, yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the superintendent's looking for some direction with that memo is concerned, and I'm not sure whether this would help out, if the memo said something to the effect that our educational courses would be dealt with no cost to the visitor. I don't know what that would be.
Well, I think we could discuss that at another point in time.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think...
Thank you. That would be helpful.
I think the superintendent knows where I'm coming from.
Thank you.
You know, anything else to discuss?
...that we may convene at our meeting here.
Before we do that, I would like to, as the mayor and the representative in the committee, wish everyone a happy, joyous Christmas, and to the Jewish community, very happy Hanukkah, and very happy and healthy and prosperous New Year to everyone. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Ms. Fattakany, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Thank you.
Eight thirty-five.